As we call out January 28, 2019, board meeting to order, at this time, we will have a moment of silence. At this time now, we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
Where's the?
Pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda and would like to add 6A and 7A and B to the consent agenda item.
Second.
With a 6A.
6A is the waiver of the timing, the 30-day for the...
I have a question about 6A.
I want to discuss that.
Okay, just one second. So it's...
I don't want to approve that, I want to discuss that.
I'm sorry.
I want to get it discussed there, 6A.
Okay, alright.
But, Mr. Chair, I have a question about 6A.
Okay.
The only motion on here is the granting of the waiver, but it appears that tied to that is the final approval of the magnet changes. Are these mutually inclusive in that approval?
It's not supposed to be.
Oh, Mr. Collins, Reverend Collins.
I'm sorry.
Alright, Dr. Postle.
The changes that were recommended, we didn't find in board policy. I don't believe they're in board policy, and we notified in December and discussed in January. If you, if we need board approval, we'd really be happy for you to make them mutually inclusive.
Has anything changed since what the board approved at December 17th meeting? These are the same items, but I don't, I didn't check to see if y'all had changed any of the language.
No, ma'am. What was explained to the board on January 11th were things like, nothing has changed. More detail was provided, for example, on the fact that when auditions are held for students, that not, that teachers or experts outside the school would be conducting auditions, or that all of the entrance requirements and the scoring rubrics would be made known to the public prior to the school choice application process opening. There is nothing significant that is in the changes for this year. This is to Phase 1, and more significant recommendations would be coming for the 2019, 20, 20, 2021 school year. It's hard to keep these dates straight. So for this coming year, really, we've not changed anything other than what was discussed with the board, and all we need from the board is approval to publish these recommendations with a two-week notice before we open the choice application process.
So we're not, we're not approving years 2 and 3, even though that paperwork is included in the action item for this motion, where those recommendations. So there were four documents. I just want to be clear that the only things we're changing for the 1920 year are what we agreed to with the experts and other teachers within the district during the application processes, that choice applications would include a paper option, that there'd be a choice fair to include all schools, but those are the only things that are changing for next year.
Yes, ma'am, and all we need approval for tonight is the waiver to the policy that lets us give parents two weeks' notice rather than 30-day notice.
Thank you.
Reverend Collins, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
About 6A?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it was my understanding that we met last time that the changes would be coming back from the, about the changes in the admissions process, and these were basically essentially the 1 through 10, is that correct? What you're saying, you were saying tonight, we're not voting to approve these, we're just voting just for the waiver, from 30 days to 15 days?
The board voted to approve those things in December, so what, it is, the way we put it together, it might be confusing. Those 10 things that are listed on the agenda tonight are the items you approved in December and that we discussed further with you on January 11.
So these are the ones we approved, the Clemson study? Are these the same village?
Some of them are associated with the Clemson study, but the Clemson study made recommendations beyond those that could not be implemented for this year, and it will be carried over for recommendation for this coming year.
So, Mr. Chair, should we discuss this now, or can we keep it in the spot, where's the agenda, when we get to it and discuss it?
Well, there's a motion on the floor to send it to consent. Just trying to address your questions.
Alright, so is the consent, is the consent rule unanimous approval during committee of the whole?
I'm sorry, a second.
Is the consent rule required unanimous consent during the committee of the whole meeting?
Well, we're trying to address those questions now, so we can move it to there and approve it at the opening point.
I think, I think he's asking, if an item is unanimously approved at the committee of the whole, it can go to potential consent.
Correct.
It was not unanimously approved.
Correct.
However, we can vote it to potential consent now, Reverend Collins.
Right, that's the motion that's on the floor, that's what's being addressed.
So then, so we voted on the floor, it's going to be potential consent, that means you wouldn't need a unanimous vote then?
Well, at this, at this juncture, because of the motion that's on the floor, to send it to consent, we're not at the committee of the whole, so right now, if there's any further discussion, we're going to vote rather than not to send this to consent, as at this very moment.
So we're going to discuss, basically discuss it now then?
Well, if you have questions about it, then let's address those questions. Right now, we're going to vote to send this to consent.
So that's discussing now then, my question is, if you don't mind. So my question is, we talked about, one of the most, talking about having, the board and the parents, the biases to use outside judges, adjudicators, including teachers from mother schools, ensure their interest qualification expectations, rubrics are communicated to all parents and teachers. So in that first bullet, so my question is, if we use, do we use outside teachers and outside adjudicators, which I support that, what about making sure that those adjudicators and teachers and judges are a diverse group of people, because I don't see this addressed diversity, can we, can we add the language that the judges will be a diverse group of people?
We would be happy to tell you that that is one of the requirements, that as we've worked through this process the last couple of years, as far as I know, there have always, this last year, there, there were a diverse group of judges in every adjudication process. That's part of our protocol. We're not voting on that tonight, Reverend Collins. The recommendation tonight simply has to do with the timeline to inform parents, moving it from the 30 days that you hoped for in board policy to the two weeks' notice rather than 30 days. That's all that we're voting on tonight, but we absolutely give you our guarantee that the panel of adjudicators will represent diversity.
It's to the population.
So Reverend Collins, so that we can move forward, let's, let's discuss the fact that this is about the timeline for you?
Yes.
And rather than that, you have a question in regards to that, and if not...
The timeline is okay with me.
Okay, alright. So as I'm probably moving second, all in favor, Julie should pop up. Reverend Collins, can you please?
Just give me one second.
Chairman Mike, I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 17th meeting and the special call meeting of January 14th.
Second. Alright, we'll probably move in second. Okay, I believe that motion passed seven to one, is that correct?
Correct, one extension.
One extension, okay. Alright, at this time, just wanted to give some brief remarks. There's three handouts in your presence, for you, in the packet that's listed. It's a summary of the Clemson study and the advanced recommendation about how to improve board leadership capacity, and also an example of one of the tubes the board governance facilitator has used in the past with boards. He works with boards to help them to improve in five areas. You notice in your packet, in the five areas talks about vision, governing practices that are consistent with the vision, monthly accountability and goals monitoring, communication and collaboration, unity and trust. Those are the area, and you have in your presence with that, it's a rubic that is used, or a guide or an example that could be used to help us in those particular areas. Also, in your packet, you will have a bio of Dr. Craybill, Ager Craybill, who is the facilitator, the trainer that we're looking at as far as helping us to initiate this training for the board. His bio is consistent, it gives a clear outline of the work that he does, working with boards nationally, and we're looking forward to having a partnership with him to help us in this endeavor. Now, the first line of communication will be for us to have an initial interview with Dr. Craybill by phone, just to kind of do an assessment of each board member as to how we operate, your viewpoints, your concerns, your thoughts, your practices, and so forth on the line. And then what Dr. Craybill will do is actually craft a tool that he has used effectively across the nation in helping boards to develop practical ways of policy governance, governing. So we're asking you to please make sure, or I'm asking you to please make sure that you communicate with Julie. I think Julie, you're going to come up with some dates for some possible phone interviews?
I'm trying to communicate the numbers.
Okay, alright, and Julie will then communicate with you to set up those interviews. And then along with that, many of you have responded to Friday and Saturday of April 26th and 27th to do the initial board training, and, and we're looking forward to crafting a way or means of helping us to do the business that we're elected to do in, in the policymaking and making sure that we are effective board members in carrying out these policies and governing our district accordingly. So, in order for us to get to that level of governance, we need to make sure that we have practical ways of doing those policymaking and making sure that we're collaborative in our thinking process as we move forward. So, so please make sure to mark your calendar for that particular date, and like I said, Julie will be touching bases with you to help set up those phone interviews. Also, in your packet is a copy of the South Carolina School Board Association legislative priorities, and they are listed in five different components, and supporting educator pay raises, revise the state school funding structure, also advocating for reducing and screen liming the amount of paperwork and reporting requirements of teachers, schools, and school district, also to advocate for removal of the salary cap for retired teachers, and to allow districts more flexibility when developing school calendars. So, so those are the South Carolina School Board Association legislative priorities that are listed. I also want to add that the School Board Association and Dorchester 2 are sponsoring a community event called Now Is the Time for Board Members from Berkeley, Dorchester 2, Dorchester 4, Beaufort, Jasper, Collin, and Charleston Counties on Monday, February 11th at 6:00 PM at Charleston Southern Light Seat Chapel. And that is the same day, I want to remind you as well, as the board's February committee of the whole meeting. Are there any, any questions or concerns that you may have? Anything that needs to be clarified?
Can you clarify that Monday, February 11th, that event?
Yeah, it's, it's the South Carolina School Board Association.
Right.
They're sponsoring an event called Now Is the Time.
Okay.
Now is the time for school board members.
Okay.
So, and that's on Monday, February 6th, and I also, I just wanted to throw out the caveat.
Yep.
That we have a committee of the whole meeting on that day as well.
Did you say the 6th or 11th?
11th, the 11th.
Oh, okay.
The 11th at 6:00 PM.
The 6th is my last day.
Yeah. Alright, there being no further questions, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to convene in executive session.
Second.
Alright, so probably move in second. And we will go into executive session.
Here we go.
Right after your vote.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, everyone's cast their vote?
Yeah.
Reverend Collins, you must...
Got a vote.
I have one for myself.
Since the information is on here, will I pass it into wherever we're going for executive session, or I can pull it up?
Alright, thank you. We will now go into executive session.
I, I can take my laptop.
Okay, good.
I need the one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We're going to reconvene?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move to overturn the D-23 consignment board's decision and refer the issue to an IEP committee.
Second.
Alright, motion of a move in second.
Just for clarification, can we make sure that the board and the public knows we're voting for these, the homeschools IEP team?
Okay.
Not just any team.
Got it.
Okay. Julie, you have that? Are we amending the motion?
Yes. So, overturn the decision and refer to the homeschools IEP committee.
Okay. And Joyce, are you still seconding that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would just clarify that that is for an alternative placement decision.
Okay, ask that you please cast your vote.
It popped up twice.
They got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Laja got it.
I'm waiting on the screen here, you may have already...
We did.
We didn't push it hard enough.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, motion passed unanimous. At this time now, we'll have public comments.
Okay, so for public comments, just for those of you who are here for public comments, we have two minutes. No speaker may use a public comment to discuss personnel matters or matters otherwise private or confidential. Speakers are to discuss issues, not individuals, and the chairman or the designee, which is me, is authorized to terminate any speaker's time who does not observe policy. Please come up here, and I'll say a couple of people's names, so you can have a couple of people up at a time. So first, we have Mr. DeAndre Muhammad, and then Shanet King, and then Whitney Kelly.
Good afternoon, board superintendent. Coming on behalf of North Charleston High School, which is my alma mater, and we're working as volunteers in North Charleston High School, and also, we're petitioning the board for more support and resources going to North Charleston High School. The principal of North Charleston High School have opened his doors up for us to come in to help and assist in any way possible. He's working hard in getting community help, getting parents involved, and also improving student and home issues, helping families that are homeless to find a place to stay as well as finding ways to provide meals for families that are hungry. Also, the principal of North Charleston High School is not a principal that sits in his office, but when we are there, and he's always in the hallway, in the classroom, positively engaging the teachers and students to help promote a positive teaching environment, whereas the students can know and understand their lessons that will increase their grades. We as a community are working to help in the way of volunteering at the school, establishing a positive relationship with the students, parents, teachers, and administrators, supporting them not only in the schools, but also in games, school programs, and community programs. What we're asking for, North Charleston High School needing adequate resources from the school district that will provide the high school with more behavioral specialists, at least two to three more student concern specialists to deal with student issues for prevention, and to bring them to balance to be ready to be taught in the classrooms. Need more teachers to reduce class sizes, with strong teaching and classroom management skills to keep students in the class and out of the hallways. Also, access to and support from any community program that the district has to offer them that can help with the emotional and social well-being of the students. We want to help in the process of making North Charleston High School, as well as other schools that have difficulties that they must overcome, a straight A school with a straight A faculty, a straight A staff, straight A students, a positive attitude, that will turn positive altitude, attendance, academics, athletics, accomplishments, achievements, advancement, and excellence, a productive school, a progressive school, a model school for the district. So let's provide them with the necessary help and resources that will make them a real manifestation of the stand of excellence that we talk about on all levels. I thank you.
Thank you.
Could you send us a copy of, I mean, because you had some real specific things in there?
Yes.
Would you mind emailing that just to somebody on the board?
Sure.
And the neighborly presidents in North Charleston have that list as well.
Okay, yeah, I'll get you, we'll get you an email. Okay, and next is Shaniki King.
Good afternoon, everyone. I stand here to speak and support our Prestige Preparatory Academy. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My name is Shaniki King, and I am a founding parent of Prestige Preparatory Academy. My son Zion is a founding student, is presently a fifth grader. My initial decision to allow my son to become a student at the school was because I wanted a positive and corrective change. At the time of interest, he was attending North Charleston Elementary, and I was not pleased with the performance of the school, nor his second-grade teacher. An informative meeting was called and led by Mrs. J. H. Coleman, explaining the mission along with goals for Prestige Preparatory Academy. I was impressed and eager to hear more. The mission statement, which includes the word empower, immediately had me convinced. I thought to myself, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for my son to become a well-educated young man. By the end of the meeting, I had already made my decision that Zion would be a founding student of Prestige Preparatory Academy. Truth needs no defense. There certainly has been a lot of good with setbacks along the way. I have overcome the majority opinions to move him into what would not be better for his well-being or education. The majority is not always right, nor is it favorable to go against the grain. I ask that you identify and empathize with his humanity first, and secondly, with the color of his chocolate skin. I'm not seeking for Zion to be looked upon as a charity case, because he's far greater than that and deserves to be afforded a decent education. Already, he's dreaming of attending Clemson University, understanding that it requires excellent grades and stats to get there. The homeschool for Pine Crest Apartments is North Charleston Elementary, and it's still a failing school with low test scores. In addition to the low test scores, teachers at North Charleston Elementary are not all-state certified. Thus, he could end up with someone that merely came to receive a paycheck without accepting the assignment of teaching. Everyone is not called to be interpositionally, just as everyone is not called to teach. I ask that my voice be heard and my views be respected, respected. I stand solidly in my decision as Zion's parent and as an advocate of his well-being, still believing in the mission of Prestige Preparatory Academy. Zion has been afforded opportunities to learn inside and outside of the classroom. The love, nurturing, and teaching he receives is always given in a spirit of excellence. It symbolizes family away from home. He is in good company. At this present time, I am a parent to both an inmate and to a fifth grader. Matthew 17:13 paraphrase says, "Wide is the gate to discretion, and narrow is the way to life." My heart's desire is to steer Zion away from a path that could be detrimental to his life. He is a natural-born leader that needs to be cultivated in the right atmosphere and surroundings in order to give the best of himself. Instead of a system giving him a number, I want him to write his own and to raise the bar for the next fellow man to stand upright and beside him.
Thank you.
I ask that you help me help Zion, J.K., and you're welcome.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Whitney Kelly, Amy Horowitz, and then Rosalyn Jameson, and I've been poked and reminded, we have two minutes, and I hate to cut people off, but somebody, okay.
In order to drive immediate, I know there's changes coming about with the Clemson study and all of that, but my question is, will there be immediate increase in minority children attendance, and will there be an increase in minority children who are siblings, who are on the waiting list for the entrance into a choice program? Like, what measures are being taken to address this for the next school year? Because there's like, it's non-existent with the diversity, and, you know, you're aware of the best choice schools. And then my second part was, how to ensure that all these efforts that you all are putting forth to make sure that it's a fair and balanced education system for all children of all diverse backgrounds? How to make sure that these privileges won't be taken away? And I referenced the attorney Kowbraski in 2002, where he threatened to take suit with CCSD, and at that time, there was lots of minorities in the choice schools, and because of that lawsuit, it wasn't even taken to court, things were scaled back, and that's when, you know, the lack of diversity was present. So I wanted to just make sure there's something for at least, you know, to take action next year, as far as the minorities, it might take time, but, you know, in the meantime, you know, my daughter has been sitting on the list, and she's passed all the grades, all, everything she needs to do, and then just ensure that if something is done down the line, that if you, if someone does threaten you with a lawsuit or something like that, that, you know, it still stays the same as far as making sure all diverse people have access to choice schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Whoever that is. Okay, Amy Horowitz, Rosalyn Jameson, and then Trina Williams.
Good afternoon. I have a child in the Charleston County Schools, and I also serve on the Charleston Area Justice Ministries Board. I'm not on the board, on the Education Committee. Every year since 2013, about 2,000 community members assemble each spring at our Nehemiah Action. Most of those years, we have pressed for significant changes in our local education system. Twenty-nine congregations that represent over 20,000 people in our community all agree that restorative practices need to be implemented district-wide. Many of you have publicly expressed that you would support restorative practices district-wide. In five years, four schools have implemented this best practice. Teachers across the district are being trained in other schools, but the necessary funding to fully implement this has not yet been made available. Recently, a significant study was produced by the REIN Corporation regarding restorative practices. The REIN Corporation conducted a two-year study of restorative practices with Pittsburgh schools, and KJ will send you the results of that study filled with recommendations of how to make our implementation more successful. Our children, our staff, and our administration in every school will benefit from the implementation of restorative practices. Please ensure that it is supported with the necessary funding. Just like every school has been required by this district to implement PBIS, every school should be required to offer restorative practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rosalyn Jameson, and then Trina Williams, and then Virginia Jameson.
Good afternoon. I stand before you on behalf of Prestige Preparatory Academy. As you can see, I did write some things, but I'm not going to even do that. I'm just going to go off what I feel in my heart. Right now, we're up and we're fighting to keep PPA open. I'm not understanding quite... I'm not understanding quite why we're having such a hard fight when the little boys that we are trying to keep going, to give them something more than they get in a regular traditional school setting. These boys, if they are moved from PPA, you may as well go on, expel them, or fail them for the year, because if they have to go into their zone school, there's a reason why they're not in their zone schools. A lot of those schools are failing schools. Here at PPA, they're given the opportunity to be in smaller class sizes, to be able to learn other things than just on the academic level. They're learning how to be little, little boys growing up into men. They're being taught things that they're not gonna get in that traditional school setting. Why are we not given a chance? After a year and a half, that's not a chance for anybody to prove themselves. We're looking for help. We want a school just like any other schools out here in Charleston County. We want a school where they have the proper heat. We want a school where they can get the proper funding. We're not asking for a lot, because we had a school where there, where she asked for monies for an early head start program. Why can't our little chocolate boys be afforded the same thing? I just want you to take that question. Why are we not given the opportunity to excel the same way any other school in Charleston County does?
Thank you. Next is Trina Williams, and then, Triva, sorry.
No, it's my handwriting. I apologize.
But I know that it's Triva, so I apologize. Then Virginia Jameson, then Christina Calantis.
Good afternoon. My name is Triva Williams. I have a child who's in Charleston County School District currently. He has attended three separate schools in Charleston County School District since we moved here almost seven years ago. He began at Jerry Zucker Middle School, went out of School of the Arts, Academic Magnet, and is now back at School of the Arts. Last year, I myself volunteered as a mentor at North Charleston High School, and every single one of these schools that I mentioned would benefit from restorative practices. There's not a single school in this district that would not benefit from it. Restorative practices was identified in the Avery Report as one of the best practices that can address the horrible reality that if you are a black student in our district, you are six times more likely to be suspended from school. Restorative practices create space for children and adults to build relationships. It becomes much more difficult for us to hurt one another when we really know one another. Restorative practices teaches kids and adults conflict resolution skills, how to lead with questions rather than stating conclusions. Adults and children are taught how to accept responsibility for when they have wronged one another. And I could stand here and make a list of incidents that have happened this far in this district, from racist remarks from students, to remarks about religious intolerance, to threats of violence, and the list would be very long. But I'm not gonna do that, because all of you sitting in front of me know the types of things that are happening in our schools, and it's gonna take courageous leadership to implement creative best practices, and it's gonna take leadership that can imagine what impact teaching conflict resolution skills can have 10 years down the road in our community. So I call on you to be the courageous leadership that is needed. I call on the district staff to be bold in their asks, and I ask that you support their asks. Thank you.
Thank you, Triva. Next is Virginia Jameson, and then Christina Calantis.
Good evening, Chairman Superintendent. I'm Virginia White Jameson. I'm the City Councilwoman in District Three in the city of North Charleston. I'm here in support of the Prestige Academy. Give Prestige a chance. Much has changed in our society and our schools. Some of us need more, and some of us need less. My visit to Prestige showed a nurturing environment. After two and a half years, test scores are up. Enrollment would be, would certainly be up if this body and this community give this very, very needed opportunity to these young men. I attended their Black History Program, and I'll tell you, I've traveled all over the world, and sometimes that piece of our culture gets missing, but these kids are not missing it. And again, I would ask you to give this academy a chance. Give Ms. Coleman a chance to show us what these boys can do and will do with your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christina Calantis, and then Jackie Behr.
Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf of Prestige. I teach fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math there and fourth grade science, and I've worked in a lot of other schools, and what makes this school special and unique is how it really is like a family. Their small classes not only help our students get the attention they need, but also gives the chance to get to know them on a deeper level. Our staff's phenomenal. We work very closely with all their families. I know every single child's name in the entire school, and you don't get that in a lot of other schools. So I'm asking, instead of talking about closing our school, to talk about helping us in ways that will help our students, because at the end of the day, that's all that really matters, is them. And they need us, so we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Behr, and then Vidon Colston, and then Alberta Bowens.
Good evening, CCSD Board. Thank you for inviting me. I'm a parent of four kids that attends this public school, Boost Academy, and they've been doing really well, and I drive about an hour from Johns Island to take them to school. And I would just encourage you guys to continue raising the standard, setting the bar high. There was some talk about the Magnet School kind of diluting the standard to 65%, but thankfully, I talked to your expert Judith Peterson, who's a principal at that school or used to be, and she gave me the real information and told me that that was not the case. So I just encourage you, you know, South Carolina comes in last in education or close to it, and I am a parent that is very involved in her four kids, and I want to make sure that, you know, not only for my four kids, but for the rest of the county, that our standards continue, continue to climb. So I would encourage you to, you know, raise the bar. I would also encourage you to change the application process for increasing diversity in getting into Academic Magnet. One way to do that is that you allow people to put in their applications through certified mail. I live on Johns Island, and I don't have internet, internet access everywhere, nor do many of the parents that I take care of. You know, they're cared for by their grandparents, so I really would like you guys to look at other ways so that the application process is less, is more fair for those that may not have the means to get a, use a computer, because oftentimes, parents that have bright kids, you know, are raised by their grandparents, and the grandparents on Johns Island and Edison, Wadmalaw, weren't taught to read and write, and I want you guys to remember that, that these parents, you know, take care of young kids that are quite bright, but they need the opportunity. And when you, you know, talk about the academic process application, that you open your eyes and ears to new ways of doing things. So please, you know, take care of those that could also have the chance of coming into Academic Magnet. So I'll look, you know, I look forward to, you know, you guys looking at making positive changes for our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Vidon Colston, and then Alberta Bowens, and then Harry Walker.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Vidon Colston, and I am the parent liaison over at Prestige Preparatory Academy. I have with me, this is Mr. Myers, look up Mr. Myers. He's a little shy, but Mr. Myers is a third grader at Prestige, and I brought him up here with me because I think a lot of times at this meeting, we get caught up in the dynamics between the adults, and I really want you all to see who it is that we're talking about, who it is that myself and my colleagues and my parents are here fighting for, and ultimately, who your policies are going to affect at the end of the day. Mr. Myers, should Prestige close, he will return to a neighborhood school where his class size will be doubled, and where the overall proficiency in ELA for third graders is 3.9%. I don't think that that's fair to him. And one of the things that motivated me to come and speak to you today, I had remarks prepared, but now I'm just gonna let it flow, is that I saw the video from the November meeting where Mr. Collins made a motion to offer our school a little bit more support with some funds, and the motion failed. And I have a problem with that, not just because I believe in our school and I believe in what we're doing, and I believe in these boys, but I also have a problem because in that exact same meeting, another charter school was awarded $262,000 a year for the next seven years to support diversifying their school where they only have a 5% African-American population. Something is wrong with that, and I think everyone here, your ears should perk up at information like that, because we say that students are the heart of our work. Are black boys included in that? Because they ended up at Prestige because they weren't getting what they needed at their neighborhood schools, now they're someplace where they're getting the one-on-one attention, where they're getting nurturing, where they're getting character education, where the numbers definitely are not exactly where we want them to be, but they're trending upward. These kids are making progress. So I just ask, give us a shot, give us some support. We need your help. These boys are worthy of an investment. They are not special needs kids, but they are a high-needs population, and they need some attention. So I appreciate your time, and I hope that you guys will remember us when it's time to make some decisions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Myers, for coming too. Thank you. Alberta Bowens, and then Harry Walker.
Good afternoon. My name is Alberta Bowens, and I'm a retired educator with 48 years of service to Charleston County School District. Thank you, Dr. Postleway, and the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you for just a couple of minutes. I volunteered at Prestige Preparatory Academy from March of 2018 to the last day of the school year. I visited all of the classes. However, I focused my time and attention on the third grade class because there was a new teacher there, and with my experience, I knew that I could mentor this teacher and provide assistance. Test scores were very good in the third grade at Prestige Preparatory Academy. I want to say that my philosophy is that people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care, and that's what we know about children. We can talk the game, but we've got to let our behavior reflect what we are saying. I want you to please give these students an opportunity to soar. Each one of them have a different fingerprint, just like all of us here in this room. Each one of us is a unique, unrepeatable gift from God. We have talents, and we will soar if given the opportunity to do what needs to be done. So I am asking you, I'm pleading with you to please move the students from Prestige Preparatory Academy. It is, it needs to be condemned. They need to be in an environment that is conducive to learning. The students, the teachers, the faculty, the staff, and anybody that goes into the school needs to have that opportunity. I'm thinking back when I was teaching the eighth grade at Artie Schroeder Middle School, and there was a reading book, and in that book, Dr. Martin Luther King's wife said that Martin was a good man. Anytime he did something wrong to someone, his conscience devoured him. I'm the same way, and I know that you, you have a conscience as well, and I'm asking you to please think about these gifted young men with millionaire minds at Prestige Preparatory Academy. I thank you for your time and attention. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I know that you're going to do the right thing. The other piece is that there were a few people that came before 4:45, but they were not allowed to speak.
If there's, if there's somebody here who wants to speak, they, I mean, we want to, they should be able to, Andy, if there's anybody here, so we'll take care of that.
Okay, but thank you so much, and I believe in Charleston County School District. If I didn't, I wouldn't have put in almost 50 years. Have a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you.
So because of, come on up, Ms. Walker. If there's somebody here who didn't get a chance to sign up, can you just, you can come up here, and we can do two minutes.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Postleway, members of the Board of Trustees. I'm here tonight representing Carolina Voyager Charter School, and I'm here to thank you. That's right, I'm here to thank you for your support of our charter school and to provide you with some information about our most recent successes. Carolina Voyager Charter is approaching the halfway point of our fifth year of operation. We're currently serving 290 kindergarten through sixth-grade students from all across Charleston County. Our school is an example of school choice that really works. Our school recently earned a rating of good on the most recent state report card, placing us in the top third of elementary schools in the entire state. We rank 16th out of 50 elementary schools in Charleston County, and we're one of only nine elementary schools west of the Cooper to achieve a good or excellent rating. Only three elementary schools in the district with higher poverty indices received a better report card than Carolina Voyager. In addition to our achievement and growth scores, our school received eight out of 10 points in school quality, which is really a critical measure of student and school engagement. We manage these achievements with a number of challenges. We're one of only a handful of schools in Charleston County that mirror the demographics of the district. Perhaps more noteworthy is the socioeconomic diversity of our student body, given that we attract students from all over Charleston County. Our pupils in poverty percentage is 46%, and 19% or nearly one out of five of our students has either a 504 or an IEP current. A compelling vision, hard work on the behalf of our students and staff, high levels of parent involvement, and a strong Board of Directors have helped us reach this point in our history. Our growth and success would not have been possible without the support of district leadership and the Board of Trustees. With your ongoing support and collaboration, we look forward to success as we expand all the way to eighth grade, and we work together to locate a permanent home for our school, hopefully somewhere in the downtown area. Again, our school community thanks you.
Thank you. Two minutes. Good job. Okay, so do we have anybody who, because of our timing, was unable to sign up? And we're gonna stick to the two minutes, or I'm gonna get knocked out of my chair.
Sure. Tammy Lockhart, I'm on the District Nine Constituent Board. I just had an idea that I had expressed to Mr. Mack, that I know you were given some free land on Johns Island, and I suggest that you might even consider putting in a sports complex that all the kids in Charleston could use, and we could run sports all year round, and also the other children can learn to be referees and actually earn a little money. And I also offered, because I'm a founding member of the Boston Women's Rugby Club, to help start rugby. The Marines are particularly interested in rugby. It has a code of conduct, and it is now a spring sport in Massachusetts, so I just offered that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening. I'm sure I don't need any introduction. I'm Beverly Gadsden-Burts, but I'm representing the State Chapter of National Action Network. I'm always excited about coming here to these meetings, but I'm also disappointed in that we have seven failing schools. We're still on the bottom. I am in no way casting blame solely upon you, because some of you are new to the board. However, this district has operated a dysfunctional district, a two-tier system, as far back as I can remember. Finger pointing, blame, R, and apology will not make up for over 50 years of miseducating students. Many citizens and community groups have appeared before this board seeking equity in education. There are ministerial alliance, NAACP, National Action Network, ministers, community people, students, parents, but you have turned a deaf ear to many of them. We have come to deal with an almost constant presence of a 5-4 vote on the county school board, and it has adversely impacted the funding to certain schools, student transfers, expulsions, recruitment, retention, staffing, you name it. We have seen minority schools close and students bust out of their neighborhoods, so white parents moving in could create charters and magnets. We fought for a high-tech school at the Old Rivers Campus. Little by little, you upstaged that. We had the audacity to think that black children can do more than make beds, flip burgers, and serve up foods in restaurants. In a nationally acclaimed hospitality city and state such as Charleston, we had the audacity to believe our children could excel. We had the audacity to think that they could be scientists and engineers. We had that audacity. So after many years of appearances before this board, we come to you today again asking that you do the right thing for children of color, that you allow Prestige Academy to be funded the way they should be refunded, and that they have heat like other schools, that they have a better facility. that they have a better facility for the students and that, that these schools are funded appropriately just like any other schools in Charleston County. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Hi, good evening. I am here to speak about the Center for Advanced Studies in North Charleston. I appreciate Priscilla for setting up the meeting with the Strategic Education Committee. We were able to share some, some of the programs that could be good at CAS. And I wanted to ask if we could set up a community meeting or the board or the district, combination of the two, could set up a community meeting in order to update North Charleston about the CAS, but also to update the, the community and the residents to get their information about what they would like, about what they want to see about Garrett, what they want to have, see happen at Garrett. Because I know that there are some programs there like culinary arts and, and hospitality that could be there that, that I saw is not going at the Center for Advanced Studies. And I just asked that, that there's no backdoor dealings that's going on that's gonna be closing certain schools. Because after Clemson study came out, we found that there's disproportionate treatment of, one minute, there's disproportionate treatment of the, the schools that are minority. So that's what, that's my, that's my request, that we pay meticulous attention to make sure that there are no negative repercussions to these schools and as we move forward. And I appreciate this, you all listening and I do want to say that I appreciate the board listening because I have found that this board listens more than North Charleston and County Council. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Murdis Brown and I'm a retired educator administrator for the Charleston County School District as well. I want to share this with you. I know you with the Charleston Coalition for Children. It's a, all Charleston kids deserve great public schools, no matter their zip code. Now whether you ran on that platform or not, I do believe that you all are here for what's best for all children. For so many years here in Charleston County, I know we do what we call community input, but I've been on community boards. We have made decisions as a community, but coming before the board, once the board looks at those decisions, those decisions were really not worth my time because the board did not follow through on what the community wished. One example, of course, was Garrett Academy as it related to North Charleston High School. I was on that committee. That committee chose one route, but the board chose another route. So we can do all the community input as we can. Let me get, I'm here for Prestige Academy. I visited Prestige Academy and I was a little bit disappointed in what I saw. And I would, I'm here to encourage you. Think about your child going to a school where the child has to wear excess clothing that may be uncomfortable because they are cold. They're in a building that looks like it should be condemned. And so we're asking Charleston County School Board, please give Prestige a chance. Look at their report card. There have been some improvements. And if anytime we give someone an opportunity, we have to give them the resources for that. As a parent, if you went to Prestige Academy, you probably would not want to enroll your child there because of the conditions under which they are, are having to work. But you got teachers there who are really being underpaid. You got one teacher who would be here tonight, but her husband was in an accident last night, okay, and she cannot be here, but she's volunteering in an art program and not even being paid. So for Prestige Academy, please consider keeping it open, giving it an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much. All right, I think that's everybody. Reverend Mack?
Okay, at this time, we'll have a superintendent's report.
Thank you. The first thing I just needed to let the board members know is that you had some sample calendars in your agenda tonight to look at. The only, the significant difference among the calendars is that the start and end, the start date, some of them start on August 19th, on Monday, others on Wednesday, the 21st. They all end for next year on the, at the end of the first week in June. And then the, the differences are the placement of the days off in the middle. We haven't taken that calendar through the various cabinets, the teachers, the parents, the students, and back to the board again. So we should have that done by February 11th so you can look at these calendars and vote on them. And we also know that one of the recommendations of the South Carolina School Boards Association's legislative agenda is to make a change in the state statute that would let schools start a, a week earlier in August so that high school students could finish first semester before Christmas. That would, would, according to the teachers who worked to develop these calendars with parents, would be greatly appreciated, but we don't know how that will impact our business community and we need to, some feedback from our business community on that. When we actually bring the calendars to you for consideration, we will talk about the color codes on them. That if you want more information on that, Reverend Collins, I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting, since the audience can't see the calendar, it wouldn't make much, much sense. The second item I wanted to discuss is the mid-year review of goals. We had set some goals. We're waiting until after tonight's presentation to talk about some of the bolder, more audacious goals because we did not want to upstage what we're going to hear from the Shared Futures Group, a group of community members from throughout the district who come from all walks of life, who've come together and worked really hard over many, many days to, to share with us some recommendations of paths that we might take depending on what sort of future we, we want to achieve for our children. So we didn't want to upstage that group, but on February 11th, we will bring some very specific goals related to the various reports you've heard this year. The Clemson Report, the Advanced Ed Accreditation, and going back to the Harvard Study in 1998, along with the, one or more of the scenarios that are put forth by Shared Future. And to be clear, the district staff and all but one board member have not, don't know what those scenarios entail. A few of us were invited to a session to hear a little bit about the draft work, but we've not yet had that revealed to us. So this is a true community grassroots effort to bring visions to us. So I'll set the mid-year conferences with each of you or with small groups of board members to just review the progress on the goals that you did set and talk to you about the, the goals you feel we should emphasize in the next 18 months. And then finally, I wanted to mention that after tonight's meeting and then tomorrow night, there'll be four sessions in four different areas of Charleston County for the public to comment, talk more about the Shared Future work. We will be establishing work groups in each of the communities that has a lot of work to do. For example, we know that the schools in North Charleston need to be seriously considered in terms of their current configuration and programs, what actually works for students and what we need to be open to in terms of, of the, the kinds of programs that are available, what we know makes a difference for kids. It could even get into looking at attendance lines, as someone mentioned, the best use of the facilities that are available, that are available there and the needs that need to be considered in the 2020 referendum. So we know that that's a whole community setting and, and we realize that some of you are starting to have neighborhood meetings, but the only reason we haven't done that yet is that we did not want to get out in front of the Shared Future work. So in addition to establishing meetings with each of you, the third item there where it says "other" on their superintendent's report is just to say that we will be actively working with various communities, particularly those whose schools are not performing the way all of us would want to see for their children, to provide opportunities for community input around a clear vision or a clear direction that this board lays out. So do you have any questions for me? That concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Karen, is there any questions for the superintendent?
Yes.
It's cool.
Yes. When, when will, this time, generally this time of year is when the board sees the dashboards as well as the live-in, attend-in reports. Do we have any idea when the board's gonna get those for this year? The live-in attendance, the live-in, attend-in reports are being finalized now and are coming to you. I just need to look back at the Learning Services staff about the dashboards for each school.
They're, it's working away. I can update shortly on the exact date.
Okay. Thank you. And when is Advanced Ed going to accredit, complete their accreditation of Charleston County? I noticed what you sent us is still a draft, meaning that they've not provided, they've not accredited the district. Can we get a timeline on that? The information we've been given from Advanced Ed is that they are waiting for their board to approve it and I don't think that their board has met and put this item on the agenda. I don't know why not, but Erica, Erica Taylor calls them about once every other week to ask when. They've told us we could release the preliminary report to the board, but it simply isn't official until the board endorses it. Thank you.
But currently, right now, it's an initial accreditation, correct? Right. Okay. All right. Any further questions?
With items that must be addressed in order to keep it.
So Item 6A, 7A, and B was moved to consent. And we are ahead of time, but a special recognition and presentation in the auditorium by the REO's group will begin at approximately 6:00 PM. At that time, we are still in operation and session, but we will move towards the auditorium and we will adjourn after the completion of the presentation.
Thank you for joining or rejoining us here in the Burke High School Auditorium for the next part of our meeting. We will hear from the REO's partners and the Charleston Share Future Project Scenario Team about the possibility and the possible futures of education in Charleston County by 2035 in just a short while. But before we move into the presentation, I would like to welcome Ms. Erica Taylor, Chief of Staff, up to present our special recognition for the evening. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Postleway, and our very special guest. Tonight, we are recognizing several outstanding individuals and I'd like to begin by asking our Board of Trustees to stand. This month marks South Carolina School Boards' Recognition Month. While our board is much more deserving than just one month in which we recognize and celebrate their hard work and commitment to children, we would like to take a moment to honor these fearless individuals and their dedication to public service and education in Charleston County. I'd like for you to join me in thanking our Board of Trustees for their service today and every day. Please give them a round of applause. Thank you. I'd now like to ask Mr. Renita Kumasingray to please come forward. Renita is a seventh-grade student at Orange Grove Charter School and is the 2019 CCSD Spelling Bee Champion. Renita is joined onstage by his principal and his father. Renita captured this year's title on January 17th by correctly spelling the word debacle. He will advance to the Post and Courier Spell Brown 2019 as the reigning champion after winning last year's Spelling Bee. Let's give him another round of applause. Thank you. I'd next like to welcome Mr. Bill Brigman to the stage. Mr. Brigman is CCSD's Chief Human Resources Officer. He was named the 2018-19 South Carolina Personal Administrator of the Year and that was just, that award was just presented to him on last Thursday at the South Carolina Association of School Administrators 2019 Winter Conference. Bringing over, bringing more than 27 years to his role as Chief HR Officer, under his leadership, CCSD has been able to consistently reduce the number of teacher vacancies, advocate to emerge a leader in the state for base teacher pay, and develop a well-designed recruitment plan that intentionally seeks to find teachers who represent the diverse population of students in the district. Please join me in congratulating, congratulating Mr. Brigman on his award. Now this concludes our special recognitions for this evening, but before we transition into our Shared Future presentation, I would like to take a moment to introduce a very special guest. His name is Kevon Singleton. Kevon is a senior at First Baptist, but he went to elementary school at Pepper Hill. He's a recipient of multiple awards and has created five documentaries that explore social justice. Kevon was selected by the YWCA Greater Charleston to be the Youth Speaker for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Business and Professionals Breakfast, where he spoke on the topic of unity and love. Join me in welcoming Kevon to the stage.
Good evening. My name is Kevon Singleton. And before I get started, I would like to thank the Charleston County School District for allowing me to speak today on this platform. I am a senior at First Baptist, but as stated, I am a product of Charleston County. I was an elementary school, I was an elementary school student at Pepper Hill and I'm a product of that environment. I am also an aspiring filmmaker with films that range in topics from the Ornsberg Massacre to the Friendship Nine, to Marion Anderson, to Dr. Cleveland Sellers, and most recently, Dr. King and his compromise with Coca-Cola in the city of Atlanta. As an African-American male in today's society, my idol is the man who gave his life for my freedom, Dr. King. In keeping with the essence and life of Dr. King, this evening, I'm going to speak with you on the topic I would say Dr. King and I both value, love. To value something is to understand its importance of work. Values can be acquired by someone through their upbringing, associations, and personal experiences. So what I value in life is completely different than that of one of my classmates. When researching values, I came across a quote from Gandhi. "Your beliefs become your thoughts. Your thoughts become your words. Your words become your actions. Your actions become your habits. Your habits become your values. Your values. Your values become your destiny." I value love. Dr. King often spoke about the power of love. He said, "Darkness cannot drive our darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive our hate. Only love can do that." We must all strive to allow love to pass in our spirit and allow love to guide our behavior. On the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, Dr. King shared his dream for more equal tomorrow. Dr. King believed that the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners would be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. Because of love, because of love for our country, love for our city, and love for one another, that dream is fulfilled here today at this meeting. Growing up in the world today, I understand I am that dream that Dr. King spoke of, the American dream. Dr. King never fully witnessed his dream for himself, but he hoped I would. I must embrace the dream and create the change for social acceptance, justice, equality, and brotherhood. The change that has yet to come to my brothers and sisters, a change I must carry on. Being born African-American, I was immediately given the torch to carry. We all have. Only a few of us choose to actually do it. Dr. King once stated, "Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love." Dr. King understood we all had the ability to serve and create change. We only need love. Love is something that isn't consistent today, so in order for us to create the change, we must love. We must love through our service, love through our... We must love through our service, love through our unity. We must "ail let" "oh, our" "thee" voices "ee" echo. Let our voices echo. We must let our voices echo until the change is realized. Dr. King not only spoke for the better treatment of African-Americans, but he spoke for everyone. He said, "I look forward confidently to the day when all who work for a living will be one with no thought to their separateness." This will be the day we bring to the full realization the American dream, a dream yet unfulfilled. Dr. King realized love was necessary in order for us to move forward as society and make the necessary changes. So as I end today, I must leave you with a final quote of Dr. King's. Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevon. Your words are inspiring, and we hope they set the stage for the next part of our presentation. Thank you so very much. Reverend Mack?
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, and thank you to Kevon. You are an incredibly talented young man and a bright, rising student. Thank you for taking the time to share your thought with us tonight. Now, I would like to welcome Mr. Don Kennedy, our Chief Financial Officer, to the stage to introduce our next presenters. Mr. Kennedy.
Scenario team, please.
I will exit when they come up.
Just make sure nobody takes my cheat sheet right there.
And on behalf of the Shared Future Scenario Team, I'm very excited to welcome the community tonight, to welcome the teachers that are here tonight, the administrators, the students, the school board, and the superintendent, to hear about the work that the Scenario Team has done about the possible futures of education in Charleston County over the next 17 years or so. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Jackie McLemore. She's a consultant with RIOs Partners, and it's a consulting firm, they're a national consulting firm, that has worked with us for the last few months and through the facilitation process, based on what you will see this evening. So Jackie.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an exciting moment for us, so we're really pleased to be here, to engage with you tonight, and we hope that we'll see many of you tomorrow night at the community conversations that we will tell you more about. You've probably received those invitations, so this is a very exciting moment. I want to start by introducing the Scenario Team. I'm going to ask them, each person to stand. We'll start with the mic, and you'll say your name, and we'll just keep it moving. So we'll start with the back row.
Lee Gill.
Leonard McLeod.
Mary Carmichael.
Anthony Brown.
Barney Blakeney.
John Reed.
Maurice Washington.
Kathleen King.
Portia Stony.
Reverend Nelson B. Rivers III.
Craig Askew.
Fram Welch.
Selina Anthony.
Vanessa Brown.
Darren Griffin, Sr.
Mia Pace.
Leanne Grillo from RIOs Partners.
John Steinberger.
Jennifer Bias.
Vanessa Denny.
Kevin Smith.
Natasha Jefferson.
Stephen Koferschubika.
Don Kennedy.
Michelle Faust.
Eric Tommy.
Thank you, and we are missing a few of our team members this evening. We're missing Benny Starr, Sully Gulson, we're missing Kyra, and who else are we missing? I think we got, I think I got everyone, right? So, and also, we are missing two people from RIOs Partners. Who else are we missing? Bill Moody we're missing. How could we forget Bill? I said Sully. So we're missing Crystal Shulten, and we're missing Gerardo Marquez, who are also from RIOs Partners. We are going to go through the agenda, and then we're going to invite you to see a video that gives you an overview of the process that we used. Before we do that, though, let's get just a little glimpse of who's in the audience tonight. We know we have the Board of Trustees. How many constituent board members do we have? Hands up. All right, very good. Current CCSD students. Current students. Former, okay, we see some in the back, former CCSD students. Very good. How about teachers? Great. Other educational leaders, administrators, educational leaders, hands up. Parents and family members. People who represent churches, faith-based organizations? A few of those. And other community organizations? Let's see some of those. Great diversity. I probably missed some really important segment. Who did I miss?
I apologize for calling the others.
Okay. You are a stakeholder, and we're pleased that you and everyone that we just identified is here tonight. So let me start with our agenda for this evening. We are, next slide, please. After this welcome, we're going to, we're going to have a video which gives you a sense of the process that we went through. Then we're going to have Kevin Smith and Natasha Jefferson come forward and give us a framing for the Shared Future Process. I do want to remind you of our hashtags, so after our presentation this evening, please make sure to frequently use these hashtags when you are responding to or participating in any of these things, the Charleston Shared Future and the Charleston Scenarios. And we'll have this information later, but there also is a website that you'll be able to reference that has all of the material related to this presentation that you can go to frequently. The next thing after this, next slide, please. So after Kevin and Natasha talk about the Shared Future Process, we're going to hear, we're going to share with you the four scenarios that were constructed. And each scenario will be presented by one person from our team, just representing the views of everyone else on the team. After we have those presentations, we're going to give you an opportunity to have conversations with people who are seated next to you, around you. We have some questions that are on the input sheet that you were handed, and we'll also have them up on the screen. After those conversations with your neighbors, we will have a Q&amp;A period. We want to hear your questions, and because we want to hear from a lot of people, we are going to do our best to keep the questions to one question per person and 30 seconds per question. After we do the question, the Q&amp;A period, we will share our perspectives on what should happen next and provide you with information on some of the things that will be happening after this evening's presentation. So those, that's the agenda for this evening. I'm now going to ask you to join me and the rest of the Scenario Team in seeing the video.
Given where things are in Charleston County right now, what might our education system and our community look like in 2035? This is the critical question that a diverse cross-section of students, educators, and community members worked on in a series of workshops this fall. The title: The Charleston Shared Future Project. The purpose: For these 30 individuals to transform their relationships into a foundation that would allow them to create four different scenarios or stories about possible futures of education in our community. The process involved learning about the nature of systemic change, stretch collaboration, and transformative scenario planning. They learned how the current education system works as part of the larger community. Then they expanded on their ideas of what is possible. And while they still don't all see the future in the exact same way, they did converge on some fundamental points. Now, they are sharing their experience and the stories they created with the community about the Shared Future Project so far.
I think the biggest takeaway for me is that this process was the first time, I believe, that all of the players came to the table to try to solve this problem. For me, it's like in the past, it's been this isolated group that was trying to address the issue and convince everybody else that we had a problem in our district and a problem with the system.
What we learned was how to have what was called stretch collaboration, how to really understand the perspective of other individuals, and to not judge that perspective, but to use that perspective as we develop these scenarios. And these scenarios are a picture or a story of what could happen.
Within our project, we only have three students, and I'm one of them, but to know that I was considered to be one of them and to know that I'm working with all these lovely adults, and they're asking me during the meetings, they're like, "Well, Kyra, what do you think?" And I'm like, "Me? I'm not used to that." But to know that I matter enough to be used to that, it's amazing.
I think what stood out to me the most about this process was seeing a group of diverse, eclectic, passionate individuals who may not all, who may not all agree on the same thing, work together for a common goal, and that common goal was so powerful. You know, it was ensuring the success for all kids in Charleston.
It also helped me realize that there are students out there who don't have the same opportunities as me, and that there's still inequity in our district that needs to be solved.
My biggest takeaway from this process was the amount of people in the group that, you know, really were dedicated to the idea of making positive change in CCSD, dedicating time, being very vulnerable, like really, really not being afraid to be uncomfortable.
The thing I want the community to know about the Shared Future is that you have the opportunity to create change. You have the opportunity through scenarios, through stories, real factual stories, to create change and a better future.
We are telling stories about what education in Charleston County may look like by 2035. And so it's not that we are trying to, trying to be negative, or we are trying to be overly positive. We are just saying, based on what we know, based on the factors, based on the possibilities, these are possible results from what we are doing and what we may do.
It's going to take time. It's not something that we can just do with the snap of a finger, but it takes time, and the time that we're giving is going to show a good result, a great result, an amazing result, should I say.
The students that were selected were selected from very varying high schools across the county, so their perspectives of how they see themselves in the school and their perception of what kids at other high schools get maybe hadn't been heard by adults before.
This problem, it hasn't just started. It was, this problem was already here, and it wasn't as talked about as much as it was, but it should have been because, again, we've, we've hurt, we have hurt because of this, and I just want everybody, someone to get involved.
So in 1835, in South Carolina, anyone who taught a person of color to read or write was fined and put in jail. And by 2035, I would like for us to have moved a significant shift and have closed the achievement gap, and that we would have equitable education opportunities for, for all students.
My hope is that every child in every geographical zone gets an education that prepares them for the future and opens doors.
I hope the results will be that more people are in tune to what Charleston County school system really looks like, and better scenarios, better planning to fix it.
And what I want to see happen is educators as strong instructional leaders with autonomy, who have a force of teachers, who have a collective efficacy that all children can learn, who work with parents and families, who serve them, who listen to them.
I hope that the scenarios will change the dialogue of education in Charleston, that we start engaging the community and start changing the way we think about education, the way we think about the future of education, and the way we talk about it.
Change. I think serious reform, serious change, that, that is my ultimate goal. That is what I want to see come from this. I want to see heightened engagement. I want to see real discourse. I want to see us elevate the level of discourse that we're having here in Charleston as it pertains to education, and you can't do that without having honest, uncomfortable conversations about all the things that are contributing to where CCSD is right now.
The work has just begun. As the Charleston Shared Future Project gains momentum, it is now on us, all of us, from student to educator, to parent, to community member, to business partner, to faith leader, to engage, challenge, and change. We must go from talking about what could happen to actually influencing decisions and taking action that will bring forth what we want for all children of Charleston County, our shared future.
So that gives you a little insight into our process, and I want to, I don't have the list of all the people who were involved in creating that video, but I think you did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. This meeting, as I said earlier, marks a milestone, and it's a milestone in a process that really was initiated generations ago, because there have been many generations of people here in Charleston County who've been concerned about education and improving educational outcomes. And so one of the things that we've talked about in our work, and I offer for your consideration this evening, is that there are two ways of looking at the future. One way of looking at the future is what we call an adaptive perspective, and in that adaptive orientation, we feel like we cannot and should not really change the context of what's going on, that really the role is to accept and adapt to what's going on. The one that we adopted for this work, and that is part of the transformative scenario process, is that transformative orientation, which says that there are things going on that we really should not and cannot and need not adapt to, that we must try to change it. So we're here because of that second orientation, and we invite you to follow along. So, we're here because of that second orientation and we invite you to follow along in your handout. That has a lot of information in it. It, uh, you're gonna hear more about the scenarios in just a minute. I'm going to now invite Natasha Jefferson and Kevin Smith to come forward and frame what we're doing this evening.
I'm Natasha Jefferson, Director of Civic Engagement and Parent Advocate for Charleston Rise.
My name is Kevin Smith. I am the Principal of C.E. Williams Middle School for Creative and Scientific Arts. And so, we, first of all, I just want to say thank you all for coming. Such an impressive group of individuals that we have an opportunity to share this work with. So, I want to start out with, what is a scenario? We want to talk about what a scenario is and what a scenario is not. First of all, we know the technical definition of a scenario is an outline of a plot, of a play. But we want to focus on the other definitions of, of a scenario, which is an internally consistent hypothesis. That's what I want to focus on, a hypothesis about what the future can be. Another definition for a scenario is a story about what could happen in the world around us and about what is possible.
What a scenario is not a story about what will happen, forecast, a prediction, a story about what should happen, or it's not a story about what could, what we could do.
So, again, the whole idea behind this is, and you will hear this as we go along, this is not about coming together and giving you answers that we've come up with. We're coming up with hypotheses of what things could happen. And so, what did we do? We brought together a team from across the system. You'll hear that word "system" a lot as well because we understand that we are connected as a system. Relationships were built so that our different perspectives could be voiced, and I can guarantee you that there were very, very different perspectives in the room. We learned about stretch collaboration and changing big systems. And stretch collaboration is a word that you heard again. That's about not just collaborating with people who agree with you, but collaborating with people who disagree with you, who may actually just vehemently disagree with you or really don't like you at all. We also realized that we had to become uncomfortable for collaboration because we recognized that just because we were uncomfortable in our collaboration didn't mean it was, we were incapable of collaborating. We also had learning journeys and broadened resources on various topics. We had experts come in to talk to us. For example, conversation with a professor from Duke University to tell us about the history of racism and inequities.
Stories about what could happen were constructed. We had a lot of stories. As you can see, it's a very diverse group here. So, the stories were endless, but we were on a time crunch. So, we had to make sure we kept them short and sweet, but we made sure we listened to everybody's story because everybody's story mattered. Inspirations about what actions could be taken. And now, we are acting to transform the system in the shape of education.
So, there are five types of outcomes for scenario work, this type of work that we, in which we engaged. First, the understandings that are systemic. Next, relationships among the actors from across the system, the individuals like you and like me. The intentions which take into account the whole system, not one part of the system, not two parts of the, of the system, but the whole system. Capacities to lead systemic transformations, which is what we believe is necessary for us to move forward for all children to succeed. And also, actions that transform the system. And so, in our process, just to tell you a little about this, you saw some images, we, we came together, we spent a total of nine days together, three days at a time over the course of three months. And some of those days turned into nights. And we spent a lot of time together and so, relationships were built, getting past the idea that we had different perspectives, but because we became proximate and understood that even though we came from different perspectives and different backgrounds, we all had a shared future. What's the most important thing for others to understand? In that process, those disagreements were expressed. This is not a process of everybody coming together and capitulating to the loudest voices in the room. We understood that. This is a process about us understanding the possibilities. But one thing I want to make sure everybody knows is that we did all agree that it was important that we transform the system on behalf of our children. What did we learn? Couple of things we learned, the idea of a hole-in, W-H-O-L-O-N, the idea that there are holes that are part of bigger holes, that we are all a whole, but we're also a part of a bigger whole. In other words, we're a part of a system. We have an obligation to that system. And another thing that I feel like I learned is that even though we might have come here on different ships, we're all in the same boat now, as Martin Luther King Jr.'s soliloquy stated.
So, you all were given an executive summary of our scenarios, but you can find the full report on, online at charlestonsharedfuture.org. And please use the input forms to guide your thinking, to provide feedback. And also, in the back, you will find where you can take notes and everything. So, as you hear the scenarios, please jot those down. So, when it's Q and A time, you can ask them.
And last, before we take our seats and move on, on page twenty-one in your scenario booklet, you'll see that there are comparison tables for all of the scenarios. So, there are gonna be so many different ways that the scenarios are presented to you, but there's a comparison table and you can see some of the differences of those scenarios there. So, as you listen to the scenarios, you can reference this table so that you can note some of those differences. I hear the pages turning, so I know that you're trying to find it. It's okay, I'll wait.
Page thirteen.
Okay. That, that's, okay, page thirteen. I'm gonna tell you what y'all had on the sheet. Y'all set me up. It's all good. Y'all set me up. It's all right. Monitor and adjust. My teachers and educators, y'all know what I'm talking about. The names of each of the scenarios are across the top of that table, and so, that's part of the scenario work, is that we gave those names. So, you'll see that. And you'll also understand that there are uncertainties, things that could change based on the situation. Those are in the vertical column as well. Okay? And before I take my seat, before Natasha takes hers, I just want to say that I am, I've been humbled and appreciate the opportunity to get to know these fine individuals and have the chance to spend time with them. So, we're gonna take our seats and I believe we're gonna move into the scenarios at this time. So, thank you.
It's 1835. That's the title. And on behalf of the team, I'd like to run through that scenario with you. 1835 represents a fixed point in time with no movement forward. Educational structures and community aspirations suffer under the legacy of this 1835 law that outlawed educating people of COVID, as well as funding restrictions from the 2006 Act 388. Repeated failure to act on recommendations from generations of studies and analysis maintains an imbalance dynamic, where some schools are high achieving and students are performing well and other schools are failing. In 2035, multiple school boards will continue to exist with high levels of conflict, both within and between the boards and the board members. District leadership and staff turnover will be constant. The system works for a part of the community, a small part, but not a. Charleston County School District's reputation declines throughout this period, eventually losing accreditation and causing community members who can, can look elsewhere for their student and children's education. Pockets of opportunity offered by select schools and in specific fields continue to exist, but are available only to a select few. Some of the best and worst schools in the United States are in Charleston County. Racial tensions increase, leading to increased numbers of hate crimes. Neighborhoods continue to be segregated and many neighborhood schools, mostly in African-American communities, have fewer and fewer resources. The achievement gap continues to widen. A failing education system leads to entry, increased dropout rates, higher student discipline, and mental health referrals, and youth suicide rates. Large businesses start hiring from elsewhere. This brings in a population that can afford what the locals cannot, leaving locals unemployed and further disillusioned, resorting to crime and violence. Tourism continues to be a major economic driver, but service industries, professionals are forced to live far from their jobs, resulting in a lack of workforce. Businesses also slow down their hiring and investment. Charleston County's economy declines over time. By 2035, the public school system is abandoned by many. Students are disillusioned, they're linked to their hometown and community that's tenuous, and those who did exist leave Charleston for places that are thriving and offer better employment options.
Thank you, Stephen. Now, if you'll take out those input forms, there are a couple of questions regarding the scenario. And so, if you want to jot down any notes about scenario one, we'll give you about thirty seconds to a minute to do that.
Michelle Fost, I'm presenting scenario two on behalf of the scenario team, which we've titled Sweet Grass Basket. The making of a sweet grass basket is a slow and intensive process. The sweet grass must be processed before it is pieable enough to produce useful products. Starting in 2019, a gradual shift where all community sectors have an opportunity to express and share comments occurs. As more groups provide inputs, incremental changes continue to, to, can, continue to increase community engagement. Slowly, more school-level decisions with multi-stakeholder teams become the normal. And in 2032, seventy-five percent of schools are making school-based decisions, resulting in students being better served through a holistic approach. After ten years, legislative changes yield some gains. In 2020, culturally relevant and rigorous, rigorous curriculum for 3K through 12th grade is adopted. By 2035, teacher recruitment, retention, and professional development have been transformed. Despite improvements, teacher shortages and housing crisis continues in Charleston County. There is an important, there is an improvement in the achievement gap, yet, yet much work remains to be done. Pockets of frustration remain, and in 2035, enthusiasm for progress has waned.
I am Jennifer Bias and I'll be representing scenario three. Just so you know, I will not be reading from the booklet, so it's different. So, if you, if that helps you follow a little bit. Scenario three is called Reconstruction. And it's really just like the reconstruction after the Civil War. This scenario is really focused on the need to reconstruct a system that was designed not to benefit all students. And so, this scenario really takes this system and restructures it, beginning with the district and the central office. It empowers CCSD to have more oversight of programs and their initiatives. There's also centralized hiring for principals and teachers so that the best talent can go to the schools with the most need. The community supports a movement to help remove restrictions on school funding by repealing Act 388. Act 340 will also be eliminated, which will dismantle the constituent school boards as recommended by reports that we have had dating back to 1998. First, the Harvard Report, the Advanced Ed Report, and the Clemson Study. Through this reconstruction scenario, the community is engaged on issues of race through authentic interaction in order to overcome barriers and increase understanding among diverse groups. Four attendance zones are created in order to provide equitable resources, increase diversity, increase enrollment, and create equitable teacher allocations so that students have a variety of academic opportunities. Schools with low enrollment will be consolidated. The school choice program will be evaluated and restructured using a controlled choice model. Universal 3K education will be implemented district-wide. The schools that are not performing will have extended day and will have more research-based interventions. The scenario is very cognizant of the challenges that will bring about this change. They will be disrupted, but with communication and transparency, they can be achieved. The district will adopt the recommendations from the reports that have been analyzed since 1998. These includes a reformed budget process, equitable distribution of allocations, and research-based programs. Many of these things will be met with resistance because the current system is working for some students. But this scenario proposes a system to work for all through transparency and difficult conversations. Thank you.
All right. My name is Eric Tommy and I'm presenting scenario four, Tech Town, on behalf of the entire scenario team. This was a fun one, but challenging too, as our scenario attempt to imagine the impact of technology on education over the next seventeen years. If you will, imagine how the world has changed over the past seventeen years with the advent of the internet, proliferation of computers and smartphones, and the rise of social media. What will our world and education be like with algorithms, artificial intelligence, machine learning, driverless cars, remote learning? However, try to consider that the basis, no, sorry, the babies of today, upon graduation, they'll be working in industries that don't even exist yet. How do we prepare students for an unknown future like this? The opportunities of technology such as remote learning and can utilize artificial intelligence to tailor education to each and every individual student. It's like a video game that even today learns and adapts the game to the player, but well before 2035, software will be enabled with artificial intelligence so that it can deliver individualized learning. Remedial learners can be caught up more quickly while advancing in their best subjects. Students will be able to work towards subject mastery with the software without being, having to follow an entire classroom. However, think about the challenge of keeping up with the pace of change and trying to prepare students for quickly shifting work demands. We'll have new challenges to provide project-based experiential learning to prepare students with the soft skills necessary for success in college and work. But what happens when individuals are not ready or willing to consistently adapt to new technologies? And imagine the governance issues around determining what's best to be taught and who will teach it and balance the demands of the tech industry and what's best for students. Our full report's online, details the scenarios of everything we've highlighted, and asks you to spend time with all of them and to get involved now.
So, the primary point of doing scenarios is really to stimulate thinking and conversations and to give a different, showcase some different perspectives about what might happen in the future, what could potentially happen. These are not recommendations, as Natasha and Kevin said, they're not plans, they're not proposals. They're merely four different possible stories about what could happen here in Charleston County between now and 2035. So, the big asset to these scenarios is they give you something to think about and you get to look at the implications of the scenarios. What are these stories? What are the implications that these stories have on the future of Charleston County? Charleston County between now and 2035? And what do you want to bring into being? What do you want to stop from happening? So, what I'd like to ask you to do is to turn to your neighbors, get a group of, hopefully more than two, maybe three people, if you can talk amongst yourselves, and we're going to address several questions, okay? So, the first question is, what stood out for you? You heard these four stories, you didn't hear them in great detail. As we said, the full stories are going to be on the website, and you'll be able to really read through those. But what stood out from you from what you heard from the four people who presented the scenarios? And then, are there any signs that one or more of these futures might already be starting to happen here? Were there actions or events that were mentioned that you can see already coming into being? And then, were there any ideas that were sparked for you? Was there anything that made you really sit up and take notice? And finally, we'll be going into a question-and-answer period after this, so is there a question that you'd like to ask that would help you understand the scenarios better? So, talk to your neighbors, meet some, this is all about community conversations, so if you meet some new people, that would be even better, and take a few minutes and have these conversations.
All right. If I could have your attention, please? That was an excellent buzz in the room, so I think there were some very good conversations that were occurring around the areas where you were seated. What we're going to move to next is we are going to move to a question-and-answer. And we have a couple of our Scenario Team members who are stationed near the microphones. We're going to ask you to come forward. If it's difficult for you to come forward, and you'd like the mic brought to you, then raise your hand, and we'll try to work that out. So, we're going to ask that you ask one question per person, don't ask a series of questions, one question, 30 seconds. And we know that there always is lots of context for the questions that you're asking, but tonight, if you could zero in on the question, and then, on your forms, if you have things that you'd like for us to follow up with you on, you can write them there, give them to one of our Scenario Team members, Mia or John, or any others of us who are around, and if you put your email address and your name, we will follow up. I mentioned earlier, and we'll have it up on the screen, there is also a website where you'll be able to get information and follow up. Okay, so it looks like we have someone here over the microphone that Mia's managing.
So, I'm going to preface this question by starting off and saying that I really commend this committee, and I find this incredibly compelling. As a graduate student, this is the work that I absolutely love doing and engaging in, and I think it is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
And I respect several of you on this board, who I know. But my question is, so how many teacher salaries were spent on the commissioning of this independent board and this consultation?
I can't answer that question, Don.
So, in terms of the expenditures here, there were no appropriated funds at all, zero dollars that were spent that were appropriated. The money to fund this project for this phase of it, I can't speak about the next phase, but for this phase of it, was done by the purchase card rebates. So, we spend millions and millions of dollars each year in purchases, just like my personal credit card. When I go out and make a purchase, I get a rebate from the credit card company, so we get a tremendous amount of rebates from our purchase cards, and so that's how this
Next question. Oh, one more?
I'm sorry, and a couple of team members wanted me to make sure that the community understands that no one here was paid to participate in this.
Yes.
I want to say thank you so much, too. This is amazing. I can't even imagine the time and energy you guys have spent in this, and to me, it's the most important issue of our time and of our state. The question I have is, given what's going on in this state, and the fact that teachers will be descending on our state Capitol tomorrow, can we get any of these scenarios in place for Charleston County, which we all love and which has always been the holy city, because we're so progressive, without the buy-in of the state? And will this group turn into an advocacy group that will take it to our legislatures? Thank you.
Okay. Who'd like to respond to that question?
So...
Two Vanessas are trying to respond.
We have two Vanessas. V. Brown, do you want to?
No, you go ahead, V. D. Go with Denny.
So, as far as can Charleston implement these scenarios quickly enough, the answer is absolutely. I think that the key to implementing the scenarios quickly is having a grassroots movement marching in the same direction toward education reform, not only in the state, but in our county. And if we have that grassroots movement demanding stellar education for every single student, that was not on cue, but demanding, really, demanding that strongly, a stellar education for every single student that walks through a Charleston County School District door, then yes, we can implement the parts of this scenario that will change the future for our children.
Vanessa Brown, do you want to add?
I think the only thing that I would add to that is, I think your question asked about state, what we need the state to do. And so, ultimately, what these scenarios were meant to do was what it just did for you, like, make you feel like we have to do something, and that message has to get to our state delegation, so that they will make change. And what our problem is in Charleston is, we have not made enough noise, so that the state delegation knows that these acts that are in place, this legislation, has to change in order for us to make change in Charleston. You are absolutely right. We are going to need change at the state level, but it is up to us to make sure we have enough activism to make that happen, and the problem in Charleston is too many of us have been silent too long.
Thank you. One more comment, John.
There are several issues that require state legislative changes. In terms of school district governance and funding formula, but there's nothing that keeps our current school board from reallocating funds to serve the purposes that are laid out in these scenarios, so a lot can be done immediately if the will is there.
Thank you. Yes, question here.
Good evening. Thank you so much for all of your work on the scenarios. In our short time, our group had a great intriguing conversation about the role of the family, and I was wondering if each of you or some of you might share your discussion and evolution about the family, and how that might change over the process of the next 20 years.
We talked a lot about the family involvement in schools in the Scenario Team, and to start, I would say that there has to be more trust built between the school community and the family community. And as part of our scenario development, we talked a lot, as you read through them, you'll see in more detail about home visits and different options, but making that connection about having multi-level decision-makers, that means a parent and a strong school improvement council sitting on sort of advisory to what the needs of individual communities and schools are. So, it's not just one formula, but what works for kids in North Charleston might look a little bit different than what works for kids on John's Island, and that voice has to come through to the school-based community.
Natasha, did you want to add?
Just to echo what Michelle has stated, as a parent and a parent advocate, you know, it was our duty to speak for the students, for the children. I'm glad we had students a part of this panel. We wish more will get involved, because what we're doing, what we've done over the past six months, it does not stop today. We do need the community involved. It takes a village. We need the parents to be involved. And it's a lot of times that our voices get, you know, pushed to the side or muted, because those in higher positions tend to think they know what's best for our children, instead of listening to those who actually deal with these children on a daily basis. So, coming with this group, we realize that not one voice is stronger than the next, that as a team, as a, we're a family now, as a family, we need to stand up and speak up for the individuals who cannot.
Thanks, Natasha. Okay, I think we have another question here.
Good evening. I want to thank you all again for your service and time in this. I'm a retired police officer, and I worked in the school system as a school resource officer for, since 2000, out of my 25 years of service. And one thing I, in working in the schools, everybody's afraid to talk about diversity, and I see in the scenarios, it's talking a lot about diversity and afraid to have these discussions in the schools. I heard teachers, as, you know, when we're talking about races, that's a no-no. And we have to talk about these things, we have to discuss it, and that's the only way we learn, and not be afraid of offending, and there's ways that we can talk about all this. You know, if we're sending teachers into certain schools of different races, then, you know, we have cultural diversity training in policing, and how do we deal with different cultures? The same thing goes, you know, when my son was going into school, he learned about Black History Month for one month, when he should be learning all through his school years, as I did, learning about culture. So, what are we going to do about mixing that kind of education along with the regular education? But kids need to know, especially if they come from different areas.
Great. That's a great question. Thank you. So, who'd like to start, because this was obviously a very lively and continuous topic? Okay, Kathleen?
I can start. I think that it's really important, you know, what you said was so important, and you're an amazing voice within this community, and I think that we all need to have that voice as well. It's really important to lean in and understand that those conversations do need to happen, amongst staff, amongst principals, the school board, the community, whoever it may be. And so, you know, there's not one answer, but I think one of the possible answers is authentic, research-based, professional development that's thoroughly grounded in like the history of where we've come from, it's something that we've spent a lot of time talking about. There's a lot of possibilities for this, but it's something that a lot of us on this team thinks needs to take place, and I think everyone on this team would think it is important to lean in and have conversations specifically on racism and where we, how we got to where we are. Anybody else want to add?
So, I'll take it back to the scenarios really quickly. From a technical standpoint, Scenario 2 has culturally responsive teaching as part of the scenario that's implemented throughout CCSD, and it engages community members in conversations about dialogue related to race. Scenario 3 implements something called culturally responsive teaching for the entire teaching and administrative faculty in the district, and also engages the community in dialogue about race.
And then Craig, were you going to say something, and then Kevin?
Real quick. So, Scenario 1, 1835, kind of just to reiterate, talks about how the system was born not to educate African-Americans. If you were caught educating black students, you were beaten, or you were fined. So, again, we talk about the brokenness of that system, and the system, even though 1835, we're still here right now, and to, we have to engage that scenario, because that's kind of where we are right now, still in a broken state, where a large portion of our African-American students are not being paid attention to. So, we took a lot of time to look at the fact, looked at where we are right now in this current scenario, and where we need to go forward to change it.
Thank you. Kevin, final?
So, I think the last thing, well, just jumping in here a little bit, first of all, we have to be ready to have uncomfortable conversations. And so, I want you to really think about this, and when I'm looking at the audience, and I know so many different people out there from different parts of my life, imagine that we all in this room had a big conversation and began to try to identify a system or issue with a big system, and everybody's bringing their different scenarios, excuse me, their different perspectives. That's pretty much what this was. Understand this also, that we acknowledge that a lot of the system that, within which we currently exist, was built on racism. We understand that, we acknowledge that, and that's why we talk about transformation and not adjustment. And so, we realize that you can't necessarily continue in a system that was created in a way to educate one group and not educate the other, and so that's why this conversation is being brokered. We understand that nine days is not going to change all of the years in which the system was built, but we have to do something, because doing nothing is not an option.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to go to...
Good evening. I too. Thank you for your work. I just have a question about, in looking at the Clemson report, some of their language said that the CCSD governance structure established by Act 340 is part of the problem that's gotten us to where we are today. I just would like a little bit more information about what exactly that is, and how the various, what are the problems with it, and how the various scenarios seek to remedy the issues with it. Thank you.
Okay. Someone want to take that, 340?
At least from Clemson, it was in charge of the report.
So, I think that's a very insightful question, and so, the Clemson report on inclusion and diversity was released this past fall, so in 2018. The first report that I saw that talked about the governance structure of the system here that includes the constituent boards was in 1998. A report that was issued, it's an Iowa report, from the Harvard University, that was headed by a PhD from Harvard, a team that looked specifically at CCSD. In that report, they clearly state that the governance structure, if we don't make changes to it, again, this is in 1998, that it would drive the system to what they call socio-economic isolation. And so, further socio-economic isolation, another word for saying that we would further segregate the system. And that's what has happened, and so with the Act of Consolidation of 1967, 1968, that created the constituent board districts, it was created to continue, excuse me, segregation. And so, what the reports are saying, Clemson, the 1998 Harvard report, the Advanced Ed report, and what we are saying is that in order to move away from that system, that the system that generated it, in this case, Act 340 on the constituent districts, has to change, that has to change in order to do that. And the change that's contemplated in Scenario 3, when Jennifer talked about the four attendance zones, that is a recommendation that's directly out of the 1998 report, to help us move away from a system of segregation and continue to segregation. Last thing I would say, in the full report that you will see online, that's already online now, there's a graph in there that demonstrates, demonstrates the extent of segregation in our elementary schools.
And I will point to the glossary that's in the piece that you have now. In that glossary, we have all, most of the terms that we thought, as we discussed with our group, that would need explanation, and there certainly is discussion about Act 388 and Act 340. John, you want to make one more comment, and then we'll...
Yes. Briefly, the Act of Consolidation of 1967 was passed by the General Assembly. Right now, we have eight constituent districts, so it would take an act of the legislature to abolish that, or redraw it into four zones, and give the district an opportunity to have more racially balanced schools that cross the current lines.
Thank you. Okay. We want to get a few more questions? Yes?
Thanks. Hey, good evening. I'm Karen Quadrio with Charleston...
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Karen Quadrio with Charleston Promise Neighborhood.
Determined through the four geographic zones, we would have board members from our zones that would represent our community. So that's how your, our voices would be heard. So even in our, our Board of Trustees, we would have specific representation from those elected officials in North Charleston, or downtown, or Mount Pleasant, or the islands. And so that's how our voices would be heard as community members. If the constituent, I don't, I don't think we addressed in any of the scenarios, in particular, how we would hold the constituent boards accountable because of the information and the knowledge that we received from being educated before we started this process. All of the information that we received tells us that it is dysfunctional to keep what we have in place. So therefore, in creating what would be the most plausible future, I don't think we considered that in any of the scenarios. So once again, the scenarios are not an answer to any problem. The scenarios are just stories, so that as we are going about our daily lives as citizens of this system, we can look at the scenarios and measure the decisions we make as to which way we are driving this system.
Thank you. And we're gonna say, we'll take the questions that are at the mic now, but we'll need to stop with the people who are up here. Yes?
Good evening. I was a Burke High School student here, and it's wonderful to be back after an absence of more than 50 years. Within the small group that I was a part of, which was multiracial, it reflected a lot of our combined sentiments. I'm also a member of the Charleston Forum, which seeks to bring all racial groups together, and you're all invited to come to our event in June. My question, though, tonight, is one that deals with resources. When, when we moved away from allowing real estate to be the primary way in which we fund education, to a proposition of sales taxes, we discovered in our brief conversation that it becomes extremely difficult to plan for the future with the unpredictability of a sales tax base. We all need to recognize that if we don't all swim together, we certainly will all sink together. So can there be a way that we can go back to some modem of a real estate tax? And how do we create internet access for all? Because if there is no way for all elements of the community to have internet access, that will be just like not being able to get books or information. We have to learn in the technology that's coming up in the future. So resources with real estate taxes and internet access, so that intellectual and mechanical and business learning can go forward with a way to get jobs done.
Thank you. And you, you couldn't probably see all the head nods up here, and people saying yes to what you were saying, because those are certainly topics that we spent a lot of time on. Right? Who's starting with this one? Jennifer?
Just to address the technology, and scenario four, that's definitely addressed there, of how we have to bring internet to the community so students can have access to information. So definitely, we discussed that. That's in scenario four. Of course, we don't have all the solutions, but it was definitely there as something that we saw as a need.
And in terms of the property tax law, the voters of South Carolina approved this law as a constitutional amendment in 2006. And the reality is, if it was an automatic repeal, which would also have to go through the General Assembly and the voters, it would mean that individual property owners would have a doubling, a doubling of their property taxation. So to make it practical, we need legislation to phase it out over eight or 10 years, and we need to push our legislators to work toward that.
If I may. So I'm the chief financial officer for the school, school district. In November, I made a presentation to the school board that was a three-year financial projection that showed that the end of that three years, that we, the district, would be in, in some financial difficulties because of the sales tax. And if we don't make changes, we, being the, the state legislators, through the actions of the community across the state, then in Charleston County, we will not have the resources to be able to do the things that, that are necessary. So for instance, this school year is the first year of a, of a three-year plan to increase teacher salaries. We would do that again next year and the year after that. But, but beyond that, it becomes very difficult.
Okay. Maurice?
Good evening, everyone. In December of, of last year, Senate Bill 255 was prefiled to address how local subdivisions, political subdivisions can in fact fund more adequately schools and the education of their young constituents. It's prefiled. It's Senate Bill 255. That's a, a first strike in getting local elected officials to rally behind this bill. And the outcome should, should prove to be very, very positive. And then lastly, with respect to business engagement, as said already, we would welcome all businesses or business interested in, in, in helping move this education agenda forward. The problem is, this is a tough subject matter. When you talk about institutional racism and, and Act 35, is it?
Act 340.
340, Act 340. But now, I'm talking about legislation going back to 1835. So 1835.
Yeah.
Look, for the most part, businesses want to engage the feel-good kind of stuff. The tough stuff, the, the hard issue, they tend to avoid. But education is everyone's business, and they have to step up, just as parents, teachers, students, elected officials, they too must step up to the plate and play their role. And please, join us. Let's, let's hold them accountable as well, and let's have this, stretch this conversation into that sector also.
Thank you, Maurice. Let's go to the question here.
Hi, my name's Gail. I'm a parent of 4K and 5K students at James Simmons. And I'm so supportive of this initiative and excited about this energy to improve the Charleston County schools. In fact, I think that we need a lot of the radical changes in Plan Three, but the name reconstruction gave me pause, because we are living in a post-reconstruction world, as we are in a post-1835 world. And if you think back to the early 20th century, there's an amazing backlash to reconstruction. And the, the, the agenda items, or I guess, the Plan of Three is kind of what I would want. But I would hate for something to, that could be perceived by the community as so radical, that by 2045, there's another backlash to that. So I just wondered if, if that kind of idea was discussed, and especially in the naming of that Plan Three.
Can I say that the 1835 legislation, making it illegal, a criminal act, to educate African-American people of this state, was an intentional law. Therefore, we must be intentional about how we act and move forward. It will obviously create some very hard discussions. But maybe it's time that this community come together and have such hard discussions. And not be frightened off from tough positions, fear of being referred to as Uncle Tom, or, or racist, but just to forge ahead regardless, to really, really try to make real changes, so that every child, regardless of zip code, receive a first-class education in our county. Certainly.
So I want to, I guess, to address your concern, when we were trying to find suitable names for the scenarios, it was really important, because this is our work in Charleston, that we find names that were significant and relational. And so the first scenario is, is named 1835, because that's the beginning of, of the mess that we have. We termed it reconstruction, because most of the things in the scenario will mean that we have to reconstruct Charleston County School District's system. And we kind of related that to the fact that after the Civil War, the South had to be reconstructed. And it was difficult, because during that time, of course, they had African-Americans that were joining the, the, the political scene. And so it was, I guess, to kind of answer your question, yes, it was intentional, that the name is associated with what we are trying to do. The same as with the Sweetgrass. What we're saying in that particular scenario is that we, we are going to try to bend and, and make changes, that it's going to take a little bit of time, because creating a Sweetgrass basket takes time, and it is very intricate. And then finally, our tech town was that it, it means that there, our school system will be transformed by technology. So all of the names are intentional. They were not meant to be offensive, but they're also not meant to, I guess, make, it's not a feel-good name, and it's, it, it had its reasons. So I hope that that helps. And we do understand that that scenario will make a lot of people uncomfortable, as is, I'm sure, the era of reconstruction in the South.
Thank you, Vanessa. Let's hear a question over here.
All right. Good evening. I wanted to say thank you first for dedicating all your time and energy to our children's future. I mean, this is it, right? You guys, I have two children here. I'm a CCSD parent at James Simmons. And I wanted to talk a little about your, your scenario three. You talk about getting community engagement, and bringing in businesses, and using these resources. How does this scenario aim to give a voice to parents, staff, and community members that currently feel lost, and how to voice their concerns in their schools? That way, we can truly know what we need for our schools and our community, and what we need to improve in these scenarios.
Thank you for that question.
So scenario three really places a lot of importance on a grassroots movement, and that's where the voice comes from. But truly knowing happens after the massive change. So when we redistribute, move to four zones, consolidate some schools, find optimum, optimum school choice, there is a constant feedback and revision loop that's done by outside researchers to make sure that children are getting what they need. Because large-scale change is, is uncomfortable, it's disruptive, and it can be disenfranchising. So we need to be sure that after the large-scale change, we are checking on our children.
Thank you. Kevin?
I, I just want to caution us, and just for a moment, before we begin to pick which scenario we want, be mindful of that. There was a term that was used over here, and the term was energy. This was more about energy of diverse individuals coming together to identify a system that needs to be transformed. There could be thousands of scenarios, and each part of each scenario could really be its own thing, and fix, fit in with another scenario. So it's not about choosing one of the four. It's about seeing, you, you ask, somebody asked a question about, well, can we do this, or what, how do we do? We can have whatever we want. It's about the energy of the individuals who are part of the system. You have whatever you want. The thing about it is determining what are you willing to give up to get what it is that we say we want. To sacrifice for kids who may not live in our households, who may never come in contact with us, to sacrifice for the least of these. So this is about energy, and realizing that as we come together in the present, we understand that we have a shared future, and we have the power to determine what that future looks like. And it is nobody else's story but our own, and we have the power because we get to write our own story. So this is about the energy, and understanding, and discussing, what is it we want? How do we move together to do it? Even though we have different perspectives, we have a shared future.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, let's hear from the gentleman over here.
First, I want to begin by thanking you for your work, and tell you how much, how impressed I am by this effort to bring about societal change, the value of education again. This is political. We need to have the political will-
We need to have the political will to tax ourselves to get to where we need to be. And so my question is, certainly, we need to reevaluate Act 388 and move away from a sales tax, which is regressive, and to move back towards a progressive property tax. But that said, we also need to reexamine the Education Finance Act of 1977, which is not mentioned, as far as I can tell. And so my question is, why has that not been evaluated when you look at the fact that the base student amount has never been fully funded by our legislature?
Okay. Mary. Microphone for Mary. Thank you.
So we did talk a lot about EIA, the EFA funding. There's a whole alphabet soup of education funding in South Carolina. There are multiple bills that are currently at the State House that do look at consolidating. I'm a school leader. I look at at least 40 different lines of funding that potentially are triggered by what students I have in the building, what teachers I have in the building, and those have to be tied to certain things. There's a need to really simplify all of those pieces and where the funding sources come from, higher ed impacts, K-12 funding, because a lot of that's on the back of your lottery tickets that you're buying and everything else that were never meant to be financing higher education the way they are initially. That was supposed to go to K-12. So there are lots of moving pieces there. I think there's good momentum right now at the State House and in the Governor's Office to make change. But again, they need to hear your voices, and we need to have organized ways to communicate those things, and I foresee that coming, so.
Thanks, Mary. Is there one more? Okay. Next question.
Good evening. I wanted to say how proud I am of everybody in this room and those that are watching because we all are showing that we care about the future of what's going to happen for CCSD and our students in it. But I wanted to bring or ask, what are the actions that can be taken to bring awareness of these scenarios to the public that seems not to care or that it doesn't seem to be a problem that they need to worry about? How can we bring this to them without seeming like we're just pushing and talking bad about the system?
So Darren's going to speak to that, and then in just a minute, when we finish the questions, there will be another way that we'll talk about the call to action and what needs to happen. So Darren?
What we're doing is going into the community and to different schools. I know we got St. John's and Stoll and a few other schools to where someone from, let's say, out in Parkers Ferry can't make it all the way to downtown, but they can make it to St. John's and from the outer areas be able to come and to be able to get the information. But you also have to realize that individuals have to want the information. So we're going out into the community, starting tomorrow. If I'm not mistaken, we'll be all over the CCSD community, and for those who are interested, they will come out, just like those that are here this evening. For those who are not interested, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink.
Okay, Eric?
Thank you. To add on to that, we know the facts and the figures, and those have been out there, and they haven't changed anything. And so the idea is that the story might spread further and faster than the facts and the figures, and that's part of what we're doing.
Thank you. Portia?
In addition to sharing the information in the community on tomorrow, we are also sharing it with our social circles. I have communicated the information with folks in my church and folks in my community, and we ask that you take every opportunity to be a part of something great.
Thank you, Portia. And our last question, we need a drum roll for this, I think.
Well, this has definitely given me a lot of energy, thinking that something will come about, change, but it sounds like there's going to be a lot of legislative parts to get that moving. But so it sounds like it's kind of far-reaching, like maybe down the road when something would be addressed. So my question is, like, how soon could we see actual changes? Like, how soon? Like, I'm a parent with two kids who are in the CCSD, so how?
Great. Great question.
I think the answer to that question is how quickly we can energize ourselves. It requires a movement. By way of hands, how many of you in the audience would want to be a part of this movement going forward, by way of hand?
Excellent.
Wow.
Excellent.
Wow. That's a big step forward.
So yes, we have some how that can happen. Absolutely. All right. So with that, next slide, please. So we're going to go to the what should happen.
John and I have decided to read from this document what should happen. And the reason that we've decided to read from this document is because every single word in it was thought about and considered, and we were very deliberate with our message about what should happen now. How do we harness the energy in this room? So if you don't mind, I'm going to read a bit to you. What should happen? Over the course of our work together to create four scenarios of what could happen, we became a team. We are no less diverse as individuals now than when we started, and we don't see the future in exactly the same way, but in debating all that has happened in and to CCSD and what now could happen to this generation of our children. And the next, if we found ourselves in agreement, on a few fundamental points. A fundamental belief we share, based on our individual and collective experience, is that every child can learn, and they are entitled to more than a minimally adequate education. It is abundantly clear that Charleston and the state of South Carolina have deprived too many children of this right, especially minority and children in poverty. Whatever could happen, we are of one mind as to what now should happen.
Well, this group is simply amazing, and looking around here, we can make this happen. Available resources should be redistributed and based on need. When we consider the resources that are available to support the education of our children, we must recognize that many of our children, through their families, have access to financial and social capital that many other families, mostly in poverty, and people of color, do not. We believe the district, the county, and the state must restructure how schools are funded, both in terms of increasing funding and the equitable distribution of money, teachers, guidance counselors, rigorous courses, and experienced principals to those students and schools where the need, in this broader sense, is the greatest. The equitable distribution of resources does not mean an equal distribution, but rather an assurance that each child receives the amount of resources needed to meet his or her needs in order to assure equal opportunity for all.
Every child, every child should be taught by highly qualified teachers, led by highly qualified instructional leaders. While the failures of public education may be complex, the first steps toward a solution are simple and involve its most important assets, teachers and principals. Talent development has not been a priority in the district, and the consequences are found in teacher shortages and high turnover, with the greatest impact felt by children in our most challenged schools. There is no discernible track for aspiring principals to be trained and ready for school instructional leadership. Promising teachers new to the profession that teach in Title I schools are inadequately prepared to teach effectively because of the challenges associated with high poverty. This most often results in promising teachers transferring to other schools or opting to leave to pursue other professions, leaving Title I schools with no option but to hire other inexperienced teachers. It is a cycle that constantly repeats itself. Sitting principals who have demonstrated high skills in instructional leadership are not granted sufficient autonomy to do their jobs. Much, but not all of this limitation is linked to the state's restrictions on autonomy that can be granted to individual schools and should be changed. Additionally, the limitation in state and local funding forces principals to be a combination of instructional leaders, building managers, and business experts and must be addressed. We believe that highly qualified teachers of under-resourced children should be experienced, culturally competent, well-compensated, mentored, and as much as possible, look like the children they teach. District practices, district practices must be laser-focused on a talent-developed strategy to make this happen.
We have some diversity of height here. District governance should be efficient, effective, and focused on kids. We collectively have attended hundreds of CCSD school board meetings and are respectful of the challenges these trustees confront in providing oversight to a very complex organization. The school board's public agenda should focus more on the means by which equity is brought to accomplishing student growth and achievement. The board can encourage and support efforts to bring evidence-based creative solutions and innovative practices to schools confronting the greatest challenges. They can and should monitor charter schools and magnet schools more closely to ensure diversity and strong performance. We believe that the Advanced Ed and Clemson Study recommendations that map out the appropriate course for governance effectiveness provide the correct approaches, and they have our full support. In particular, we find the constituent board structure, a vestige of segregation, to be a major impediment to the board's efficiency and effectiveness, and believes the steps should be taken with the legislature and possibly the courts to see them removed.
All right. Height differential here again. Acknowledging the active role of racism in Charleston, every student now should be afforded equal opportunity regardless of race, socioeconomic class, religion, region, or culture. We came to consensus on this conclusion, that the legacy of racism in 1835 continues to harm our community today, with all of the pain and tears that such a conclusion can convey, and there were tears. The inequality we see in the education of our children is at its source the result of continuing racial bias, whether implicit, explicit, or institutional, in many of our schools. That most of them are either predominantly white or black results from many factors, but one of them is the way attendance zones are drawn. That Title I and rural schools offer far less opportunity for equality education than urban and suburban white schools is undeniable. It is insufficient to expect the school board and the superintendent alone to shoulder this responsibility. Rather, it is for the community as a whole to acknowledge the active role that racism plays in preventing high-quality, inclusive education in our county. With that acknowledgement, we can move forward on the road to equal opportunity.
Okay. Now it's time for the ask. What can you do? And we need the whole team here. If what should happen is to happen, it must be owned by the community as a whole. The timing is right for the citizens of Charleston County to transform our education system. We, the Charleston Shared Futures Scenario Team, are committed to moving from scenario planning to action and to building a movement to make equal opportunity a reality for all children. Making this future a reality can only occur if parents, students, educators, grassroots movements, faith leaders, and others of high moral values across the county view it as a necessity. So here are some things that you can do right now. You can join the movement. Go to charlestonsharedfutures.org. That's charlestonsharedfutures.org. Do it now, or do it when you get home, and you can find, you'll get feedback, you can provide feedback, and know about the four community meetings that we have tomorrow, and even recommend where can we go, where can we take our show on the road to reach those people that one of the gentlemen was asking about. You can learn more about how the current system is failing too many of our children. Read the Clemson Study, The Post and Courier's minimally adequate series, the Advanced Ed Report for certification, the 1998 Willie Report, and scenarios that we presented today, all available on the site, charlestonsharedfuture.org. So now it's up to you to advocate for change and hold those in power accountable for making it happen. We can do this.
So in closing, just a few comments. On the back of the booklet that you received are four locations for tomorrow night's community conversations, and they will be very much conversations, more engagement between the people who show up. So please, share that information with your friends and neighbors and other communities that you engage with, so people will show up tomorrow night. These are just a beginning. There will be more of these conversations as time goes on. So we're just starting tomorrow night with those four. And these forms that we gave you, these input forms, you can also do them electronically, and if you'd like to get involved, please make sure you turn in your input form to one of the team members as you leave, so that we can add you to the mailing list and keep you informed of what's going on. And finally, just a reminder that the success of these scenarios is not about, did these events that we put in the scenarios actually happened? That's not the point. The point is really, did these scenarios stimulate conversation, reflection, and ultimately action to really change the course of the future of education here in Charleston County? That's what matters. It's the conversations, it's the actions that are going to make the difference here. So we hope that you'll continue to stay engaged. We don't have all the answers. That's also not the point. It's really the community that's going to make this happen and come up with the solutions and the path forward for the future of all students in Charleston County. So thanks again for coming. We appreciate your time and attention. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. We're turning it over to the board chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give this REO's project a round of applause. Thank you, REO's, for your partnership with district, and a tremendous thank you to the entire Charleston Shared Future Project Scenario Team, who took countless hours and days out of their busy schedule to come together and pour themselves into finding ways as a community to shape the future of education for our students in order to provide equitable access, opportunities, and success for all our students. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. Thank you to our mayors, our constituent school board members, our Board of Trustees, our delegation members, our community partners, our parents, our teachers, staff, and community members for your interest and your support. At this time, Board of Trustees, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
I'm going to move second.
Probably move in second. Thank you, and have a good evening.